Okay. We're on TV, so we have to sit down, yes. Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. This is a committee meeting tonight. We have four committees going to work with us: Transportation, City and Safety Services, Finance and Personnel, Planning and Development Committees. We're going to begin with the Transportation Committee chaired by Michelle Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first presentation tonight is regarding the Job Access Reverse Commute Program, better known as JRC. And we are going to have Michael Lockman, who's presented to us before, regarding this opportunity for a grant proposal. And basically, what we're looking for is to -- what this grant would do would be to provide -- I lost my train of thought. A bus, a bus system farther out into the county. And so we've had several conversations with other interested parties on this. So Michael is going to present. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there, Michael.
So, the Job Access Reverse Commute Program, I've had a couple of people ask me, "What in the world is this, this JRC program?" It's a federally funded program designed to aid low-income workers in reaching jobs, jobs in education. And it's something that can be used for transit service, both to expand the hours and to add new service in terms of bus routes and coverage. So, as most of you probably know, we have a route right now, our Route 5, that covers the west side of Athens. It goes out Columbus Road and to the Plains, and returns on Route 682, and comes in West Union Street. And for a long time, it's been kind of our redheaded stepchild of our routes. It started out a number of years ago, only happening a couple of times a day, and from there, it went out to 10 to 4. This past year, we were able to expand it to 9:30 to 5:30 is the new thing. And it's really grown in popularity, each of those expansions. We went from about 700 rides a month on that, before we expanded the hour on each end to about 1,100 to 1,200 now. So it seems like there's a lot of need and a lot of demand, and I'll talk a little bit more about that need and demand. But the main thing that's difficult about this is if you're living in Athens, you really have to ride this route all the way around to get back to where you're going on the west side in one direction. If you live out Union Street, you're going to have to go out to the Plains on one leg of your trip. Likewise, if you live north Athens, Columbus Road, you're going to have to go out to the Plains in the other direction. And the other thing about it, it's really interesting from this Job Access Reverse Commute perspective, is it doesn't cover normal business hours. So nobody, as it stands, can use this to commute to a normal 9 to 5 or an 8 to 4 type job. And that's something that we're fairly painfully aware of. So, the JRC proposal, we weren't sure if we were going to have a chance to apply for this program this year. It's a competitive grant, and we hadn't heard anything from the state government, and they just released this not three weeks ago. So, they're telling us that there's funding available, and what we've had on the planning drawing board for a while, and in our county-coordinated plan, is the idea of running a variant of our current Route 5. We call it the Route 5A, which in the city of Athens would be the exact same route, but in the opposite direction. So it would have on West Union Street and on the west side, and on Columbus Road and on the north side, instead of having a bus just running one direction once an hour, you'd have a bus running one direction, and a half an hour later, a bus coming back that way for both of those major thoroughfares. So that's what it does for Athens. What it does for the county, we would use the variant route to do a straighter shot through the Plains and to go out to Chancy as well, which would loop in another 1,200 or so, mostly low-income people. And we get a lot of demand from that area. We get at least several phone calls a month asking us, "Do we run a bus route to Chancy? Why not?" And the last thing that I'm excited about from a Job Access point of view is that our County Job and Family Services is now headquartered out on Route 13, and the proposed route would run right by that. So, this has a lot of different points within the proposal that really fit the intent of JRC, that connecting people to jobs very nicely. So I think if we can put together a good proposal, we have a very good chance of making this project a reality in 2015. So, before I go into the financial end of it, does anybody have any questions about what the nature of the proposal is in terms of the service offered?
I think one thing I'd like to add is that in our conversations leading up to your presentation tonight is that not only is there the job access, but the medical care and some of these other places that people need to access who may not have transportation.
Exactly.
And this whole loop provides for all of that as well.
And the other important thing about the proposal that I should note, it's not just about this variant route, it's also about expanding the hours. So we've been talking about going 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., covering the whole spread of business hours and beyond, rather than just what we have now. And that would actually bring the level of service on the west side up to where it is in the rest of the city.
Any other questions yet before he pursues? Okay.
So, the reason that I'm here tonight, like most federal grants, this grant has a matching component. The proposal as it stands now has a capital budget and an operating budget. The capital budget would be a one-time expense to buy an expansion vehicle so that we can run this route. And the operating expense would be a 50-50 split. That's the typical split for federal transit programs. The capital's 80-20, federal, local. So, the project budget for the 2015 calendar year would be $130,500. That is capital and operating. So the capital part would be, let's see here, $53,000 for capital expenses, $77,500 for operations. And of those two amounts, the total local matching money that we'd have to come up with would be $45,000. Now, there's been a lot of early discussions on how we can cover this in a way that's not onerous for any particular governing body. And it seems like it's important with the amount of benefit, with this tripling of the level of service on the west side and the north side, that the city has a stake in this. I don't think it's the entire stake. So we've also been talking with county officials at this point, and I think, without really knowing yet where that conversation's going, it's an active discussion that we're having. But what we'd like to see is some sort of coalition that could put up a local match for this project. So that's why I'm here tonight, is to educate all of you on what the proposal is. We have a very short window of time to get this all figured out, unfortunately. The state only gave us about a month to get this all together. The deadline to submit the proposal is May 7. So whatever we do, we need to move fairly quickly.
Yes, Steve.
I have a couple of questions for you, Michael, and you may have mentioned this already, and I wasn't paying attention, although I was, I've looked at the JRC already. And I understand your concept of having a coalition of entities that might be, you know, working their way into some kind of cost share on this. I'm looking at the list of different agencies or businesses, but one of the things that kind of jumps out at me is where you're talking about the local cost share of the $45,100 for this, and then you go on to say that it would be the city and hopefully two other entities. But I'm looking at this list, and this list is extensive. I could imagine that you would want to go after more than just two as you're moving this forward.
It's an excellent question, Steve. I think when I originally planned the budget, I looked at the timeline and thought realistically about how many entities we could get on board in that very short window of time. Particularly government entities, we all have public processes that we have to get through, meetings to vet these things at. And so I think there's an opportunity here, if we get several to pledge early on. We have the opportunity to draw in other stakeholders. There's no law that I know of that bars us from continuing to seek out additional funders to spread things around. But we do need, the requirement of the grant is that we have somebody saying that they're going to cover this by that deadline of the proposal.
Okay. The other question I had was, I guess, one of metrics, and I'm just curious as to whether you've had any test runs that have gone out to the Chancy area or anything like that? Do you know, or do you have some guesstimate, a good one, as to what your ridership would look like in reaching out into the Chancy area?
Sure. My guesstimate is currently based on what our Plains Route, our Route 5, does. For the purposes of this grant, I estimate it at about 30 rides a service day. The Plains Route right now is doing about 50. And that's looking at about 20 start-up for the Chancy variant, and maybe about 10 for the additional hours for our existing route. I would call that conservative, but we have to budget for the fact that it's probably going to start off slow in the beginning of the year and build up towards the end.
Mayor.
Couple of things. One, I think this is a good idea to extend it. I know that it's, we're in charge of the city limits, and no more in theory. But at the same time, I know there's a need out there. I've been attending, and we know that in the rural district, there's transportation issues. Again, if you look at stakeholders, there's quite a few out there. I think, this again, this is for 2015. You know, if it doesn't, we can always walk away from it. I suspect at our peril, because they'll not like us, for another grant, but the fact is, I think we can put this together. Again, it's a reimbursement system, so therefore, somebody has to put out the money and then get reimbursed from the ODOT. If you look at the players, and I think you've got a copy of this, right, everybody? Okay. There's quite a few here. If we were trying to look at metrics, I suspect we could try get some information for Athens County Job and Family Services, as well as we could probably pull the Athens On Demand for some of the data, knowing full well that it's just people will call in and look at that area. I do get calls as well from Chancy, and I tell them, "Unfortunately, we can't do it." The extension of the hours to the Plains itself would be an addition where somebody could actually use it as work. And this is a different fundraising fund that we haven't really tapped before. So I look at it as an expansion of the possibilities. I know, the conversation I had with Jack Freck, of course, was that, I said, "Well, what about the Aorta?" Because the people have been there for a long time, aware that there was a bus system that was going a multi-county way. One of the things he pointed out is that the times have changed since then, in terms of public transit. In the time Aorta was functioning, $100 junker would get you from point A to point B. And the fact is, in the '70s there, at that time, you could fix your own cars. These days, it's a, you know, the junker's a $1,000 junker maybe, and you need a computer and you have to replace, swap out the black boxes inside. So it's not easy for many people to get around in terms of transportation anymore as it used to be. The do-it-yourselfer age is evaporating at this point. From my point of view, this is worth moving forward on. I think we can, you know, realize if we don't get all the partners that we want to commit, and I think there will be multiple partners, I was at the Regional Planning Commission, and we've tried to pitch this as well, Lance and myself, bring it forward and say, "What do you guys think?" They pointed out that the township trustees may be interested, townships that are effect, which would be Dover and Athens. Not that they have deep pockets. You look at libraries, I was kind of surprised the words didn't fall, but I'm told that they have requested some improvement of services. So there are people who are actually requesting the ability to get on a bus and go from point A to point B. Extension of hours and a faster route, we see that has improved in the city area, so we may as well look at it and say, "How do we make it go and function better?" So I'm pitching it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, because that's the feeling that I've gotten from the Advisory Transportation Group as well, all the groups that I'm involved with and talking to other people. And I believe tomorrow, it may be on the agenda for the Commissioners' meeting? Maybe?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's possible.
Thank you, Representative Pappy. Thank you, Michael, for presenting. I wanted to echo my support for this program as well. I appreciate the mayor's points. I met with Michael and Michelle, I believe, last week to look at this, and I felt that Michael had his ducks in a row in presenting data and information to us regarding this. Additionally, when looking at this list, 15 different medical services are within that realm on the west side that people can access because of this increased ridership potential, along with five low-income housing entities. And to me, it just makes sense. In past conversations that I've had with Keith Wasserman from Good Works, it's one of the reasons why they appreciate their location in town, is accessibility. So again, I appreciate your hard work and efforts, and I want to echo my support. Thank you.
So, do you want to talk about the bottom line? You want to talk about the bottom line?
The bottom line is, again, the budget is $130,000, which of course, 53, 80% of that will be covered. Operating, 77.5 in theory for that, for operations. Essentially, the local match for 2015 would be $45,100 approximately. But again, we still have to have the money there to be reimbursed. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I believe what we landed on in our meeting was $20,000 from the city of Athens, and trying to work out this whole capital purchase and how that would work. You indicated perhaps community action may have the funds to do the capital purchase and the reimbursement. And then, of course, the discussion with Jack Freck was such that he indeed does want to support this, that it's kind of like everybody's positioning, who's going to say, "Okay, we'll put this much money in," so that's what it took from our meeting.
And I think what the conclusion that we're coming to is, the city of Athens would maybe shepherd this forward.
It's leadership at this point. Somebody has to say, "We're ready to move forward." And tell you truth, we're the biggest entity in the county. You know, with the exception of the university, I'll admit, but they've got their own things to do, and it's not to go out to Chancy.
Right.
And you look and say, "We went to the Housing Advisory Commission Friday." And one of the things you see, of course, is the need for transportation to and from jobs. Habitat for Humanities was there, and the reason why they want to have houses here in the city, because of the services, the transportation services. If we can extend it out to Chancy, then it becomes availability for a viable household to be out in that route someplace. So we've expanded the footprint of their options at that point. So there's a synergy that could occur in this, if we're willing to step forward. I mean, and we're taking a chance. Again, we're looking at, we're committing to a grant that we're going to be chasing down. We don't know what the budget for 2015 is. Who knows what the state will be doing? We know a little bit, but, you know, who knows where we will be on this? And if it doesn't work, if it falls apart, and nobody comes to our assistance, and their stakeholders just pull back, we can do the same, you know? I hate to see it, but at the same time, we should investigate this and think about it.
And the other thing that we're hearing from all the grant opportunities, whether it's transportation or wherever it's coming from, is that they want collaboration, they want regional entities to be working together, and this will be a good example of that. Job and Family Services and the county isn't going to be able to get this kind of grant without us and vice versa. So we all need to work together, is the bottom line.
And I would add to that, that I think that it's a great moment in our county history to have people in the wider county thinking about transit service. We've seen Athens On Demand be very, very successful countywide in a limited way, and there's a lot of other counties and regions in Ohio that already have that type of service. So I think it's an important point, and I think that this grant can really play a pivotal role in getting the county to think about what the future of transit for it is going to be, not just in the city of Athens.
So at this point, go with Jim.
Question. What did you say the deadline was?
May 7.
That's right.
So we need our feedback from those other entities as soon as possible as we're moving forward here.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. The formal support would be a resolution?
An ordinance.
Generally, whatever is a resolution with the particular entity that's involved, it varies by entity, obviously.
You as, go ahead.
No, I'm thinking it's going to be an ordinance, a one-reading ordinance, with us taking the lead.
Okay.
And then, as you said, from May through the end of the year.
That'll be his job. And I'll point out, again, we've committed to the Athens Mobility Coordinated Grant. This is part of the, please, that fits in the puzzle. Realize if we have this, if we put a route out there, extend our hours to Chancy and to the Plains and make it functional, many of the On Demand people who are actually probably utilizing that for this area would be, we could actually expand the footprint of that service as well. So you could see there, it will work out. It sounds like you probably need an ordinance that we would enter into an application, or are you doing the application or we're doing the application?
Hapcap is doing the application.
Okay, so really what we're doing is committing to the funds to back it. Is that what you're saying? Or are you going to be backing it? How much are you backing?
No, we need the city and other stakeholders to commit to backing it.
Okay, and the commitment would be for what, a dollar amount?
Well, the, I heard you saying 20,000 earlier.
You can always read up to 20,000, if that would be our max. And if you get a lot of people involved, and we didn't have to put in that much, it'd be great, but up to 20,000?
That's an excellent point. I think that's a good wording.
Okay.
And probably next Monday, rather than wait until May?
May's coming up.
Very soon.
Well, we'll have to have it next Monday, I think.
So your next job is to go get the rest of the money you need and have those first up.
Find those stakeholders, Michael.
I'm guardedly confident. I think this is a great project, and a great time for it, so we'll see.
We're live on TV. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Michael? Ready to move on? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Boogie on the Bricks. So we have several issues that we need to work through for ordinance, but first we'll have a presenter, Scott Krebs, will present for Boogie on the Bricks.
I think I would just set this here as my visual aid. Does that work for you all? Can you kind of see that?
Yes.
This is the street plan of, I don't know, unless I could, should hold it up or...
Unless the camera, do we want the, Scott will help us.
What camera will work best, this question?
Yeah. So I'm Scott Krebs. Thank you so much for having me. Again, the Bricks is a not-for-profit organization. This is our 10th anniversary, and so it's kind of a special one. So I'm here basically just to really briefly talk about the general plan. Here, you see the street plan.
Scott, by the microphone, so they can hear you on TV land.
On TV, on TV, yeah.
I can do that as well. No problem. So Athens Premier Free Community Music and Arts Street Festival, that's a mouthful, but we've been doing it for 10 years. This is our plan. We have two stages this year. A main stage performance that goes from, I'm trying to see, oops, oh, you're going to do this, okay. That goes from, just want to make sure I'm right on this, 12:30 to 11:00 at night, and our second stage, which will be down towards Union Street, not into Union Street, because that is the street that will not be closed, from 1:00 until...
9:30.
9:30, thank you. Yeah, so that's our music. We have a bunch of wonderful bands, local bands, that will be playing. And we are really trying to work with more nonprofits as well. We have a couple of volunteer groups, some of which are Appalachian, Hellbys, the Derby Group, and some others. We also are working with Rural Action to do their Zero Waste Initiative. They'll be along with us, and they were their first year last year with us, and it worked out really, really well. We don't have a lot of waste, actually, because we, you know, we don't sell that much refuse-oriented items, but nonetheless, they're there to help. And we have Athens County Children's Services and the Dairy Barn focusing on our kids' area, which will be, again, in the parking lot there, next to attractions, you know where that is. So that's, as you can tell by the little map there, our kids' area.
Across from the diner.
Yes, across from the silver spaceship. So we are, we consist of seven board members. For the day of the event, we're hiring five managers. I'm, again, the event coordinator, and we'll have a cadre of volunteers that will be taking part in security, sales, service, information, and also the kids' area and all that. So we do consider this a family event, and we, you know, we are pretty strict about the time that we cut things off. We even have a couple of new ways this year to make sure that in fact, 11 is indeed, the doors are closed, we don't sell anything else, no merchandise, no more beverages, and we're done at 11, and we start cleaning up. People break up. As many of you probably have been to the event, it's a fun event, it's a very lively event, and some people have been asking about what we're doing in terms of, are we going to be with or near the Brew Week events? We are not. Oh, it's our, we're our own event. We're really happy about that and excited, because, you know, June 21st and the end of July are two totally separate, wonderful summer events for Athens, and we're really going to make a push this year. There's going to be, hopefully, some really nice coverage in Columbus, and bringing people, you know, to Athens. I think that we're excited to see it grow in the ways that it can slightly. We don't want this to become some massive, huge thing. We really like the fact that, you know, it's on Court Street, and people really enjoy the sort of, to bring their families out and to enjoy with that. So we, I did mark on there as well, some of the safety things that, you know, that we've considered as a board. We've got the fire lanes, and so there's, I believe it's 14 to 16 feet, something like that, that will be...
16 is what he said.
What's that?
18.
Oh, 18, sorry, thank you. 18 feet on, you know, all appropriate sides. We'll actually be closed this year. It's a little different. The only kind of difference here is that we're going to be a little bit farther down on Washington Street, so right up front here. And there will be a right turn only coming up from State Street behind the main stage, and, you know, outside of Donkey Coffee, there is also, that is closed to traffic as well. And there will be, the Zero Waste folks will be outside of Peoples there, and our info booth and first aid area will be kind of centrally located right outside of Peoples Bank. So just to open it up, at this point, do you all have any kind of just initial questions or comments or anything? I'd love to field those.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I have a general comment. I love Boogie on the Bricks. I think it's a great event, always has been. I'm intrigued with the children's area. One of the things I like about Boogie is the fact that it is family-friendly. Is that going to, are there going to be like bouncy inflatables or something inside there, or is it just a nice daycare drop-off, where I can just send my kids off there to...
Definitely not a drop, it's going to be a great interactive area, and we're really, really trying to make it a little more... really trying to make it a little more robust in the options that are there. So that's why we are working with both Athens County Children's Services and the Dairy Barn and a group of volunteers. So it's really going to be a wonderful, you know, we're face painting and, are we going to have a bouncy? Of course, we're going to have a bouncy.
There you go.
Good lord.
Got to have a bouncy.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. We will not say no to that. No, but so a lot of different events and some games and some craft areas and things like that. So it's really going to be, you know, a nice area to be able to bring your kids and kind of also be able to hear the music as well, so.
So I think, Scott, the fact that you've, this has been running for 10 years. People have realized what works, what doesn't work, what people are looking for in an event. So I think there's a lot of history here as to know, to know what's, what works.
I would agree. I mean, we, you know, we've, I think we're honing it yet, you know, tweaking a little bit. But this isn't a totally new event, as you said. I mean, 10 years, and we're just, we're kind of trying to make it even more successful, even more, you know, get more people out. Last year, we had a little funky weather during the day, and we still managed to rally back and kind of, people came out. And it's kind of an amazing thing. But again, the Bricks is obviously a name that people will come out for and work their summer calendars around. So it's, it's pretty exciting. Yeah.
Karen?
Thanks, thanks, Scott. My guess is that the Sheriff's Department will be able to come and go from Washington Street. And likewise, my concern, I can't quite tell from the drawing whether or not the parking garage will be accessible as well. So...
What did we say? Yeah, we're, parking garage will be free and available.
Yes, the parking garage will be...
I'm confirming with the chair of the, of Boogie on the Bricks. So...
Super.
Yes, it is available. And so, and we're in communication with the Safety Services folks, and they have, you know, our numbers, and we'll be meeting with them, obviously, like in the morning, as well as be available throughout the day should anything arise, any emergencies or any other types of unforeseen.
And so the ordinances that we need to discuss, that we will put forward, is of course the street closure from 7 to 1, because you'll need that cleanup time.
Right.
Pre-set up and then cleanup time.
Correct.
Everyone will be able to park free in the garage.
Yes.
For that day. The day? Or do we start that at a certain time? How do we usually do that? Okay, we'll look at that. We always do the glass-free, and that's now within our code. So everybody knows it's a glass-free event. We have some vending issues with an ordinance that we need to put forward. And then, of course, we do, do the noise. We allow it. We waive it.
Suspend it.
Suspend it. And I think those are, those are the ordinances that we have to put forward. And again, we've done this for many years now, so I think we're... Paula, did you have something to add?
Just a, yes, we do do, we allow free parking on the day, so that will be it.
The whole day?
And we had, when we met about his route, he understands it. We'll make sure emergency services have access in and out, so.
Thanks, Paula.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions?
Good partnerships, good not-for-profits.
I mean, you know, and just to add, we have, you know, local artisans, and we try to work with folks that are here in our region. And we, you know, we want to continue to foster those relationships and really work with, you know, again, the, we have a plethora of wonderful nonprofit agencies that we can team up with and make this an even more well-rounded, you know, family, community, arts, and music festival. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Did you want to mention East State Street?
Excuse me?
Under miscellaneous, East State Street.
I am, I have that.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. President, I do have some miscellaneous items.
Okay.
Okay, so, East State Street, many of you may have read in the newspaper that there's been a study going on, that a group has been hired to do a study, a traffic study. And Paula, would you like to discuss that a little further?
Sure, we're waiting on the data, as indicated. But we are scheduling a public forum slash open house for May 8th at the community center. We're still determining times. The consultants would like to capture, like, late afternoon into evening to allow as many people as possible. At the same time, we're working with the farmer's market to have, in advance of that meeting, a table set up there to show this information and gather citizen input. The best thing we could get from this is an additional feedback.
I would strongly, strongly encourage the public to attend this May 8th event at the community center, because we, as a city, get a lot of comments about the traffic on East State, safety issues on East State. And it's one of the largest volume areas of traffic in this region, ODOT region. And the federal and state government are looking at what to do with this interchange, and our comments need to be there. So I really strongly encourage people to come and ask questions and obtain more information if so. Many of you know there are a lot of issues on State Street, and this is going to determine our plan for the next, I don't know, 10 years, or it's, you know, a long-term planning process here. So sometimes with increased activity and consumerism, which is what's occurred out there with the four lanes, it has brought the traffic issues and the safety concerns. Anybody else on council want to comment on this?
I might just add, for clarification, for the TV viewers and people in the audience and/or those who may not have read the article, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is this is looking at the intersection where the ramp is coming off of the highway and then the traffic on East State Street, that whole corridor and/or transition zone, correct?
Down to Walmart.
Thank you, yeah.
So basically, from Bob Evans to Walmart is what's being studied and looked at. So, with the huge idea of safety.
I'd just like to add that I hope we can also make sure that the Far East Side Neighborhood Association is invited specifically to attend that public meeting, because it's of particularly, particular interest to those folks who live in that area that many folks don't even know is back behind East State Street and may, you know, either are traveling by car, on foot, or by bike in that corridor. So, you know, our kids are going to school in that corridor, and it's really important to those of us who live back there.
And so, you know, the consultants specifically asked, what do you see in terms of traffic? Now, they've done a study, so they'll be able to respond back. But, you know, being at that hood, it was, if you want to turn right, yeah, you go to the end of the street. If you want to turn left, you go find a light. So that, there are going to be at least proposals. We told them not to rule out anything on the table that might make some significant changes in terms of the traffic pattern there and access.
You did say time to be announced.
Yes, correct.
We do know it's May 8th, the time is to be announced. Okay, so again, we encourage everyone to attend.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay. Okay, the final item, just as a reminder, our International Street Fair is this Saturday, so Court Street will be closed most of the day. So just encourage everyone, especially nice weather, to come out and enjoy that. Okay?
Free parking at the Bricks.
Thank you. Okay, Patterson, Steve Patterson are going to talk about City and Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to start off with Safety Services by having Joan Kornansky present on, Joan and Jean Cunningham both reached out to me and asked to present on the West Side Community Association's Beautification Committee presentation, so you can talk to us about beautification.
I do need to, I have a PowerPoint presentation I want to, want to use. I think I've tried it on this computer before when I was here for another meeting. I'm just not sure if I'm going to need some technical help to...
Caretime's technical help, right now.
I mean, I could do it myself, but I...
He's a busy man.
So I can just put it right in there, right? And it's going to work.
Sounds pretty good.
So... Oh, you're good. Okay, where are we at at my computer? So I can pull this up, or is it just going to pop up? Okay. Okay. Well, I'd like to thank Council, Councilmember Patterson and Council Clerk Walker for helping me arrange this meeting. There was some confusion. And I realize now that the website's been updated, the city website, that although I thought would be, would be speaking directly under the City and Safety Services Committee, that planning and development may also be involved with this since it deals with zoning. So I have enough handouts at the end for both committees, since we have one person on both. So as soon as we get it up, okay. So, my name is Joan Kornansky. I live at 56 Mount Street, and I am presenting for the Beautification Committee of the West Side Neighborhood Association. The committee chair is Ed Newman, and members include Meredith Shiro, Beverly Flanagan, Sarah Green, and I'm blanking on Jean's last name, but Cunningham, and myself. And all the members of our committee are, participate on council boards and/or council committees or city boards. And we are very committed to the city. So I think we're ready to go? Okay, so I'll begin. We feel that the current enforcement efforts of the Athens City Code Office are problematic, and that the current enforcement efforts are encouraging a blight-like situation. Okay, where's my arrow here, guys? Okay. Particularly in regards to 50203A, which states that all solid waste shall be kept in containers stored out of view from the street and behind the front edge of the house. The current enforcement only requires that containers are placed behind the front edge of the house. I'm going to have numerous examples, and I'd really like to state the streets, because what I've found is this is apparent all over town. And I do have a little gadget here, which is not going to show up on the screen. Okay, on the left side is the situation on Grosner, on the right side is the situation on West State Street. Additionally, on the top left is High Street, on the bottom left is Marietta, and as many people may recognize, picture on the right is North Congress Street. The problem, solid waste containers stored behind the front edge of the house, which is causing what we feel is a blight-like situation. Visible evidence of trash and litter, which deteriorates the quality of the neighborhoods. The situation on your left is High Street again, and then on the right is a situation on Columbia. Now, when I just, out of sight was enforced, which was several years ago, solid waste containers were placed at this residence behind the house. Today, containers are placed behind the front edge of the house. I think you can see the difference. Another example would be on West Lancaster, or, excuse me, North Lancaster. And then, on the upper left, we have Morris. On the right, we have May. On the bottom, we have Oak Street. On the top left, we have South Schaper. On the top right, we have South Lancaster, two bins sitting right in front of the house, stored there permanently. On the lower left, First Street, and on the lower right, Ohio Avenue. The solution, we feel, is solid waste containers stored out of view. And I've taken pictures at both residents that were owner-occupied and rentals on the west side and the east side. These two pictures are particularly interesting. The one on the left is on First Street, and that's a rental, and the one on the right is, I believe, on Franklin. And that is an owner-occupied...
That's on Grosner.
Or Grosner.
Yeah.
Both of them, if you notice the terrain, have steep hills behind them. But both of these residents have managed to have their trash out of sight. Other cities are currently engaged in campaigns to clean up and eliminate blight, such as Huntington, West Virginia, which began a cleanup program last year to make the city a nicer place to live. Cincinnati has initiated an extensive campaign to keep Cincinnati beautiful. And I might note that the city of Marietta requires all containers be stored out of sight. A comparable city that's worth looking at is Morgantown, West Virginia. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Nisley for giving, leading me in this direction as to see that Morgantown was such a benchmark place for Athens City. If you look at the picture, the first time I looked at it, I wasn't sure whether I was in Athens or not. Here's how it works in Morgantown, and this is a new initiative. Trash enforcement is increased to beautify city through a clean community concept initiative that was going on in 2012 and 2013. One of the tools they use are language in their code. And as far as containers are concerned, they are brought back to an area that is not in the front yard or the front porch and not visible to the general public. But Morgantown also uses, besides enforcement, they back it up with fines. Their fines begin at $50 and go all the way up to $500 per incident. Something else that Morgantown has incorporated into their code is specific descriptions of what includes trashy, trash area. And that would include broken trash bags, loose garbage, overflowing cans, or a building of excessive waste in storage areas. Our request to City Council, that City Council remedy the soft language of Athens City Code by initiating the following changes to the code. Striking behind the front edge of the house from Athens City Code 050203A, and adding to Athens City Code 291201A, the following, including broken trash bags, loose garbage, overflowing cans, or a building of excess waste in a trash storage area. I know this is copying code, but we all do it, so I think it's not a problem. And number three, increasing fines for improper placement of solid waste and recyclable containers. In conclusion, we are asking that City Council initiate changes in the language in Athens City Code Section 5 and Section 29, in an effort to tighten up the code and make Athens a nicer place to live. And what we've done is put together in code language for the changes that we'd like to propose City Council to move forward. And I think I have copies for both committees.
Thank you, Joan, thank you.
And I'm not sure I have a copy for you, but I will send you one.
It's fine, I got it.
Okay. Because... So once again, I'd like to thank all of you for listening. And do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Joni. I really appreciate your effort on that. Of course, I knew, and I know several of those properties myself.
Right, exactly. So there are obviously situations that, and this was only a few pictures. You know, I have a trove, as a group, we have compiled just a ton of pictures and tried to pull out representation. Many of these streets are entryways into our city. And if you drive along North Lancaster between Second and... And if you drive along North Lancaster between Second and Carpenter, just almost every house has got a pile. Needless to say, the side streets are also pretty well polluted, so we would really appreciate.
And I appreciate you bringing this forward because we will be bringing up the group that has met since last June that also tackled and discussed this issue, so we will be bringing forward our report later, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joni.
Steve?
Question?
Um, I wasn't quite sure if we were going to have discussion regarding this issue tonight or if this is just initial sort of collect data and look at and consider, or are we gonna, where are we going from here with this information?
Initially, this was just to here with the, the Westside Neighborhood Association wanting to present or to council. There, we don't have anything in play right at this moment, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just getting information, thank you.
What, something I would suggest, maybe that, maybe working with the planner by providing large scale maps is identifying maybe whether there's patterns to some of this using data that you have, but also if there are, tend to be problem hotspots and everybody just kind of does it because everybody else does it, whether there's certain landlords that are particularly egregious in this sort of thing. Also, whether it has something to do, I know some areas, you have to be really kind of ingenious and creative in order to put your garbage someplace because of the geography and, and stuff. And so I think that trying to do some mapping and some visualization would probably help at some point also too.
I would just say that we, I think when we get into discussing the ad hoc code committee report later on in the meeting, I think we can discuss some of that because we've spent since June really picking this issue apart, so.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of overlap between.
Lot of overlap.
Okay.
Member Butler?
Thank you, I just had one more comment. I do want to say thank you for the information that's being presented. It's obvious that the committee has done homework. There was an extensive number of photographs there, it wasn't singling out any particular part of town, it wasn't singling out any particular type of residence, I didn't get that impression. So I do acknowledge that. I have had emails in the past with some of you regarding concerns about people of various ages and potential disabilities, the challenges of our terrain and backyards and steep, so I guess we'll be able to discuss that later on this, in this meeting. But thank you for the homework.
Thank you again for coming.
Well, I'll thank you when we get it passed, right?
That's fine. The second item that we have tonight is, deals with our government channel. The Tricaster, which, the Tricaster, as Scott has explained to me, is a system, Scott Thompson has explained to me, is a system that's used for essentially switching cameras during our live feeds and kind of really orchestrates the way the government channel works when we are presenting live. The system is four years old and it is starting to fail, as I understand it.
What?
Not a good thing when we're having live.
We're still on the air right now, it's just a good thing.
Thank you.
It started kicking up about, about a month ago and it was with, we first noticed it during the mayor's press conference and it was one of those things where we got done and the system didn't react right and we were like, that's kind of odd. And I don't think we had, we might have had a council meeting that went okay and then next mayor's press conference came up and it really acted up again and acted up during the planning commission and last week. So it's really one of those things that's, it's, it's on its way out. We do have an opportunity to trade this unit in. Basically, the Tricaster itself is a computer-based, all-in-one camera, audio, graphics, a computer with a hardware panel on the back where you plug everything in. So it's computer-based, runs Windows 7 and for a machine that's that old, running weekend, week out, it's, it's, it's there. The money we'd be requesting coming out of Cable Access Fund to do that with our trade-in, it's, it's right about $20,000. So, and when you look at what it does, it's replaced monitors and CGs and switchers and it's, it's really stationed in a box kind of thing, so it does a lot.
And like most computer technology, I mean, they've got relatively short lifespans and you think of things in the grand scheme of things. Our system's going on more than four years old and typically these, these systems are good for three to four years, so this is one of these imperative items for us to operate with. As I understand it, the system is $29,000. We have the opportunity, as Scott Thompson was saying, is to trade in and get an $8,000 credit on the trade-in. And, and there's also a further incentive to once the quote comes in and all that, that it would actually go down even more, down to essentially $20,542.09. And then that includes shipping, so this is a.
And it also includes a, it's called a surface control, basically it's the, the old style buttons where you push to switch the cameras. It's the upgrade that normally is almost $6,000 by itself, so it's, you know, that's nice because we don't have to worry about that in the future.
Questions, member?
Yeah, thank you. Scott, if you could just clarify what, what we'd be getting for that amount of money and then, and then, I, I know you mentioned what we'd be replacing and if maybe you could remind me what we spent originally for that equipment?
I think originally we spent, and we did, we did get a small trade-in back then, but I thought it was even a little higher.
Okay.
Back then.
And it's, it's not replacing the little cameras that are on the wall right now?
It's a rack around a computer. It sits underneath the rack and it, it's what all of our audio plugs into, all of our cameras plug into. It does our recording, it sends out to our streaming, I mean, it's, there's three major components in the control room and that's the one that hasn't been replaced. Last year, we had a power event and that unit was, the routes are signal around the room was covered under warranty, so that's a brand-new unit. And we replaced our computer graphics playback with the bulletin board and the graphics and all that that runs 24/7 last year. So this is the one, you know, last of the third system that hasn't been replaced in quite some time, so. So it'll, like I said, it controls everything for a live meeting.
And what would the warranty or potential life expectancy, would it be similar to three to four years?
Yeah, and that, and that's pretty much the schedule we've been on. This is, this might be our third system or so since 2000-ish.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have funding in that, in that particular account, so.
My question is, since you said this is the third time we've been doing this replacement, it seemed to me that perhaps we need a special fund set aside where at the end of a certain life cycle for a piece of equipment, say four years, the money in that fu- in that, in that fund is, is already there, it's already, it's ready to go.
Well, we have, the Cable Access line is there.
Right.
And that's what it's used for. And, you know, we're pretty good at not replacing stuff unless it needs replaced.
Right.
And so, you know, the way we've budgeted and tried to work with life cycle, you never know when something's going to fail. But we've been lucky enough to have that money there.
That laptop in front of you there, it's, it's, it's going to give you about three years. I mean, I, I, you know, you just know that. In three years, I'm going to have to have another one, which means I can predict three years from now that in three years, I will need $1,795 to replace that, okay? I know that, it's coming, it's already been set aside, it's ready to go, it's no surprise. You know, I just say, well, it's just coming on my budget and I'm replacing things as, as they should be. We do that with other things like police cars and things, at least we should be doing.
So you're advocating for this equipment change?
Am I, am I advocating for it? Yes, yes, I guess I am, but I, it's, I don't know, it just seems prudent that in the year, we're, we're not in a situation where you come to council and say, hey, guys, I need $20,000. You know, surprise. It, it shouldn't be a surprise, I mean, we know it's going to last four years. This is 2014, so in 2018, I'll know it's coming and we're ready for it.
I'd like to say, I think there has been smart planning that's been going on, you know, when you look at this particular account line, the Cable Access Fund, there's $53,000 sitting in there, so there's, there's plenty in terms of covering this and then looking at any foreseeable incident, incidentals that might come up this fiscal year.
Look, I might add, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
According to the 014513, there's $38,000 in the capital out, like TC 500s right now into Cable Access. I forget what I earmarked that for, so I'd have to go back and review my notes on that. Again, as you say, the certified resources is about 50 and change, somewhere in the 50s. So there is money to be able to appropriate more in. But again, there's adequate right now, but I'm sure, as I said, I'd have to go back and look at my notes on what we were, we earmarked a lot of that stuff for. I thought there was a discussion of vehicle one time, but that, that was last year's money, I think, so I'll have to look there.
Yeah, we're not doing a vehicle.
Yeah. But again, if the needs, if it, you know, I think it's important to, for transparency and information and communication to have if something's breaking down to replace it. And in terms of funding, he's, he's been pretty favorable with this stuff.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
The next committee is Finance and Personnel chaired by Chris Nisley, who is not here this evening. Steve Patterson is going to lead the discussion here. Mr. Patterson, again.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item is the Public Defender's Contract. There will actually be two ordinances going forward. The first one will be an ordinance that's essentially making sure that we have our paperwork in order. It's for, for past years, for this particular agreement to where the, the Board of Athens County Commissioners working with the city in terms of, of being able to use the Public Defender's Office. And that was from, I believe, 2011 through 2013. The second ordinance will be an expenditure for the same thing. The Board of Athens Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining services for the Public Defender's Office. That will be for the time period of July, or I'm sorry, January 1st, 2014 through June 30th of 2014. And the amount on that is $63,183.12. And just to make note at this point in time that then we will also have to renew, or this will have to be renewed for July 1 throughout the rest of the fiscal year, from July 1 through June up 2015. So this is getting us caught up as well as an existing expenditure.
Again, this is a fiscal year, so it cycles through from June to July or, yeah, July to June. And we usually budget for it, so we have the money in it. I forget if it comes out of the 106 or the 101?
106, 101, 106, it comes out of municipal court budget. $130,000 a year is what we have budgeted.
So we're, we're prepared for that, it's just a question of cycling it through each time and making sure we do the paperwork.
Thank you. Any other comments? The second item is a, an appropriation or transfer, actually a transfer for the court fund budget to where the Community Corrections Grant Fund, which is 235, will be transferring funds from the TC 100s, $4,594 from the TC 100s into the 300s and $3,254 from the TC 500s into the 200s. This will be for, if I'm not mistaken, the equipment, moving money around into the equipment fund.
I'm not sure about that. They're coming up on the end of their grant year and they have some leftover money in those other funds. This is no new money, it's just making, able for them to spend the money at the end of their grant year, which ends, new one starts in June. So they do need this transferred. And yeah, some is equipment, but not all of it.
Right.
So it's a shift of transaction classes?
It is, it is. They're gonna, and they have permission from their grant year to buy some incentives for people that are on probation as they do well and move forward and it's something other entities have done, so they'll be using this money now to make that purchase before their grant year ends, but those incentives will be handed out, you know, in the future, not within the grant year.
Thank you. The third item, again, is a transfer for the Richland Avenue South, as everyone's aware, but a lot of money that's had to have, be appropriated and/or transferred. This particular transfer would be from the sewer debt fund into the sewer fund for the Richland Avenue project and it would be $90,000 that's being transferred.
We discussed this last week as well. We just did this in, in the, for the Union Street project, but it didn't make it into the ordinance that you passed last week for Richland South. So that money can't be posted for them to spend until you make that transfer, so I'll throw it out there now. I'd appreciate a suspension on that. Can I go offline or off your, I have to schedule very well, agendas. We may be faced with amending the other Richland South ordinance's resolutions regarding easement issue and the seeking right-of-way. We're still awaiting legal guidance on that, so, and again, we'd like, ask for the whole suspension and proceed. We know that one of the four entities has, is at the table now and has negotiated, but we're waiting for the other three within our 30-day time period, correct? Right. Basically seeking legal guidance on, you know, what measures, if any, the legislation has to, if, has to occurs.
And when that does, when you do get confirmation on that, that falls under transportation or is that falling under Finance and Personnel?
I apologize, I think I'll go back to transportation, but I failed to mention it under her committee and since we're talking about amending a different ordinance for Richland South, I just would add this to it.
Thank you. Another item is life insurance for elected officials. And that is basically amending an existing ordinance, 143-13, for non-union personnel and it will include all elected officials for term life insurance coverage for us, so.
Would include all of council and the treasurer because three-quarter time and full-time employees are automatically covered in the ordinance. If you've got a copy of the wording, Debbie has already sent a draft to change that, but council and the treasurer wouldn't be considered three-quarter time and there's just no set hours to say whether you're, you know, what your time is. We have been paying for life insurance for council and the treasurer since I started. So I assume you'd like to keep doing that, but it should actually be put forth in writing that there's a reason we're doing that because any other part-time employees in the city are excluded from that benefit. Costs us a close to $200 a year for each person.
How much am I worth?
Dead?
Yeah.
Twenty-five, $25,000. Pretty standard, you know, same as the rest of us.
You want a wanted posted on that or?
It would cover a funeral.
Enough to get you in the ground.
Same as the rest of us.
About a used car.
Thank you. The last.
Can I just throw this out here now just to make a note so I don't have to interrupt next time is, I would like that one suspended too, if you're okay with that, because we've been doing that. But, you know, in my office, we like to have some backup when we spend money and for everything that we do. So I'd like to have it in there that we should be doing that, because we pay that monthly. Thank you.
The last thing I have is an announcement and that is that on Wednesday, April 30th, at 1:00 and I believe it's going to be in the front conference room here in the city building, is a webinar on the Affordable Care Act, what the employees need to know or need to be doing right now. This webinar is essentially designed or built around informing us, preparing us, preparing your jurisdiction to the phases of additional benefit mandates, sharing responsibility penalty and exercise taxes. So it's really kind of educating ourselves. So it's really kind of educating ourselves on what things are going to look like as we're moving forward through 2017, I believe. So it's, it's a big thing. The reason I'm announcing it is that the Finance and Personnel Committee will be there, at least some of us will be there, but this is just to make everyone aware.
Steve, that's here.
One o'clock.
1:00 P.M.
I believe it's in the front conference room? Is that correct?
Yeah, it'll be a webinar, and the Human Resource Director extended invitation to all council members or anybody in the, as well as the Audit's Office, just to keep us all up to speed on what's going on. So.
Again, it's April 30th, 1:00 to 2:00 P.M., front conference room, City Building, for ACA.
You might want to let Jennifer know, HR Director, know that we'll get overcrowded, but I know a couple of us from my office are planning to go, and if anybody else is interested, make sure she knows how much room is needed.
If we need to move up, we're moving up here, and we'll have a sign on the door.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
And finally, we're going to have Planning and Development Committee led by Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have two just general discussion items on board. The first is the Code Review Report, and a while ago, last year, at one point, June, we put, the council had appointed a ad hoc committee to look at code and to review some of the issues that surrounding code and code enforcement. And they've come back with their recommendations and their report, their first report. Ed Baum will present it. Thank you.
I'm Edward Baum. I'm at 20 Sunnyside Drive in Athens, and I'm a member of the Ad Hoc Code Committee, and I do believe you have received the report, correct? Okay. I was very pleased earlier this evening when the West Side Community Association had a disputification committee come and talk about some issues which they see in the city of Athens, particularly because those are the kinds of things which led to the creation of this committee. I mean, it wasn't just on placement of trash cans, but a lot of other issues. And so we had a lot to have talked about. I also want to thank particularly Councilmembers Pappy and Rizner, who were chairs of the committee, Paula Mosley, who was there all the time, John Paskey, who was there, provided lots of information. So it was a good committee. And Alan McMillan over here, who is our secretary, keeping us informed of what we actually said, at least after we said it, at least we thought we said. So we had some interesting meetings and some interesting discussions. It's not my intent to read this report to you, but basically to point out some things which I think you need to have to go forward. We did discuss a lot of other things that are on here, but we focused really on the four. And the four were dealing with the code office itself. One of the things we noted is that the decrease in the amount of time necessary to have an inspection on a rental. One time, it used to be 24 months, but in the past five years, that has been whittled down through the efforts of John Paskey and his workers to 14 months. We, as a committee, felt that it really should be 12 months, partly because you have usually a turnover in most of the rentals every 12 months. And so in order to, to do that, we had a couple of recommendations here. One is to increase the half-time person in the office to full-time, to make that to full-time administrative personnel, to rehire the suspended, I, not, wrong word, not suspended, but not rehired person because of budget problems, and then to increase the SWOOC officer to a full position as a code enforcement officer. This would allow you to bring up to speed, as it were, a 12-month rotation on rentals. And it'll also allow you to do some other things that it's really difficult for the code office to do at the present time. How are you going to pay for it? A modest, it says in here, increase. Well, it's really a modest increase. At one time, we were talking about ten dollars per year, per rental unit, which would be modest. Someone said, well, how does that compare with other communities? We did a quick and dirty search on the Internet, and we're at the higher end, but not at the highest end, of what cities charge for rental units. So the staffing was one of our main concerns. A second concern was elements of code enforcement, and it says in here, recommend ordinance revision if necessary. Well, now you have a recommendation. See, the special committee of the West Side, and I think Beverly will give them our, my thanks anyway, that you have some specific recommendations, because as you drive down the streets, we are concerned about what the city looks like. This goes all the way from gum on sidewalks. I remember a long discussion about that last few years, to placement of trash cans. And dealing with trash cans, one of the things we did discuss extensively was a uniform trash can system. Instead of some brown, some blue, some red, some big, some small, some bags, but a uniform trash can system, and also discussion of a single-stream recycling program, which would allow you have, what I saw in Key West, Florida last year, each house has three cans, one can for trash, one can for recyclables, and one can for yard waste. Lots of palm trees down there, so they get lots of stuff blowing around. But something like that would do a great deal to improve the visual image of the city in the whole. So we have trash can. We also recommended some changes regarding snow removal, and these, of course, specifics will have to come up from members of council, but change to a fine system with a graduated response. And if the code office becomes just a little bit larger, then they can spend a little bit more time. Of course, this last year was kind of a hard year. We had lots of snow. Couple of years ago, we had very little snow, so they could spend their time doing other things. But when you take a group of people and you say, do this and don't do that, then the people who said you should be doing that get upset because you're now doing this. And so one of our concerns is personnel in the code office. We also talked about planning, the zoning. We noted the zoning code is presently being reviewed by the Planning Commission, which is appropriate. I don't know how far they are in the process. It's, I understand, a very slow process, but they're working through it with the planning officer in the city, and they will come up with specific recommendations for you. And then ordinances, language updates would be included, dealing with porches, snow removal, storage, trash placement, exterior furniture, and parking on lawns. And some of that you already have, and some of the others will, coming up. I would note that one of the things we discovered fairly early was that there are a number of groups in the city working on some of these issues. The Butification Committee of the West Side Community Association is one. You have the TAG Committee. You have the, get, get it right here, the Community Policings Group. And so you have lots of other groups, and it was not our intent to repeat some of their work. So these are some of your recommendations. If you'd like the committee to continue on in something, we might be able to, but I think we are pretty much out of energy at this point, and we leave this to your good hands and any questions you might have. You could address either to the chairs, members, or me.
Great. Thank you, Ed.
I don't want to speak.
Yeah. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the members of the Ad Hoc Committee and all the other people who've come in and worked with your committee in this process. And that, it's, I think, you can never say thank you enough to people who work on these type of committees, so I want to say. Did you want to say anything? Yeah, Al?
I would like to echo, you know, it was actually in the last couple lines of the report, what's that? Oh, my name's Alan McMillan. I live at 209 East State Street, and I'm getting very used to this podium, so anyway. But I, I'd like to echo what's in the bottom sentences of the report, and Ed pointed, high tech. When I took a look at the tasks per individual on the team, and we were briefed on that early on, I realized this is one real hard-working group, and I think we'd be remiss to not point it out and commend the group, that they are working hard, and their productivity has grown substantially. You know, so then it's a question, and there was all sorts of ideas about what do we do or what do we add to? And I think it's really, you've got choices if you want to put more tasks on, and Ed was even talking about things like the snow, which are seasonal. Some years, you don't have much, and some years, you got a bunch. You either have to take things off the plate or add personnel. You know, it's as simple as that, so I think that that's where those recommendations come. The other thing I'd like to point out is that it was, to use a, it was a diverse group. You know, we had people coming at it from all different factions, and I think our leaders would be, should be commended that they put together a good and diverse and spirited group. And, and, and the more we got to know each other, and the more we talked it out, and this is the lesson that I think, the more we talked it out, we had more in common than not, more sense of working together, more understanding. And so our ability to facilitate, you know, different factions, you know, community activists, neighborhood associations, landlords, city officials, in some sort of form that we maybe talk more than we are, I think that there'd be a lot of positive benefits, because, I mean, why everyone loves living here? This is a really cool city, and sometimes individually, groups within the city aren't as cool as the city itself. And so maybe, but I can tell you that we had very diverse group, and I think we walked away from it, better friends, sharing good ideas. It wasn't contentious, and I was proud to serve on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Would Jeff, um?
Just want to throw a question out there, Ed, Alan. The report's done, it's been presented to council here, and we've read it, and you guys did a good job of presenting it. Where do you want council to go now?
That's a leading question. I think you have some specific recommendations right now. I think that the committees that are appropriate for sections can look at specifically, for example, we recommend a graduated fine system for snow removal. It's not our type of job to say what specific words should go in there, but that's a recommendation. We have made a recommendation for a uniform trash can system. I know that Service Safety Director is looking at that at present time, and has had discussions with the solid waste system on that. So there are bits and pieces, and it becomes a responsibility of the committee chair to sort of push things along in each of these. If you were serious about solid waste, hiding it, that's something to attack. If you're serious about trash cans, that's something about snow, there are lots of bits and pieces. And I think one of the things that became apparent to me fairly, fairly early on was people came to the committee, each with his or her own specific interest. And they overlapped a bit, but not always. And so you start bringing those together and say, well, what can we do to make the city look better, work better, and the people in it act better? And that's what I'd sort of like the Planning and Development and the City Services Committees to be looking at, the specific languages in the code. I don't think you have to wait until the Planning Commission gets done its work through the zoning code, but you could look at some of these right now and say, okay, they think we should do something in this area, what should we do? And that's where I think you should go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question, Ed, for you as well. Yeah, sorry.
That's right.
I wait till you sit down, then.
Yeah. Now, I mentioned one thing. My hearing is going, and so I have no problem hearing Steve or Jim, hope you don't mind me using your first names, I know you all so well, or Paul or John, but some of you have very small voices, so I would ask that you speak up just a little. Steve, he already does.
Thanks, Ed. The question I wanted to ask of you is, did the committee, and I could ask the whole committee, I guess, everyone who sat on the Ad Hoc Committee, did, was proprietary funding explored at all?
I'm sorry, what?
Proprietary funding within the code office, was that ever explored at all for possibly out of fines collected or whatever?
Well, we explored the reality that more money is collected in fines and rental fees than the office spends. But then it's one of those things, how do you count in the time allocated to the mayor's office that spends on code enforcement issues? You know, it's these time motion studies, and that was way beyond our capacity to even think about. So, for example, here, you're all sitting here talking about code enforcement, that means a little bit of your time and your vast salaries is allocated to code enforcement.
Oh, sure.
And that's what you do in allocating money. I'm sorry, Alan, you don't get paid. But that's something the city council has to really look at. And if a particular office needs more money, then you say, well, where can we get it? Well, sometimes you can raise fees. Sometimes you can't. If you decide you need more fired, fire personnel, you can't raise fees on them. And so that becomes, you say you need more of these, and so that's the balancing act which council, when I was on council, we had the same problems. It's one of those balancing acts. If you see a deficiency here, you can either do one or two things, take it from someplace else or raise much more, including that nice insurance policy.
Steve, I would just add that we did talk some about that, and we also met, Jeff and I met with Kathy about that. And one of the things, as we know, the fees have not been raised since, was it 97, for rental permit fees? It's been quite some time.
I don't remember.
It's been quite some, sometime in the late 90s. So we felt like also a bump up of those fees, and if we needed to discuss that further, we could, but we really felt like that was in order as well.
Okay.
Just a $10 increase, we thought would generate, how much revenue?
About 50.
About 50,000.
Pay the fee, pay for a new car.
Yeah, it's something I've often thought about.
Those are quite big numbers.
But we understand that.
Garbage is, right.
And that's what the SWOOC, of course, comes from, the SWOOC, and how the discussion about the uniform trash cans and recycling.
Something that I've often thought about is, and again, it came up tonight, it came up earlier, is, you know, if we're going to talk about possibly changing the fee structure for violations of trash cans not being removed, or trash in your yard, or, you know, snow removal, which is another thing that, you know, if any of those changed, that's where my question comes from, is with some of the fee changes, can there be a proprietary funding line that helps pay for another half-time code enforcement officer or something along those lines, just to kind of throw that out there? Mayor?
Really, what you're talking about is fines versus fees? Is that what you're saying?
That's one thing I was talking about.
Okay. I think the suggestion at one point for the trash litter was $50, coming from 20 to 50. That's always a possibility. The worry, my worry about proprietary stuff is that structure is now you have some, you know, you have an organization that says, the more I, the more I track, the more money I get. And you can see where that would start to move, shift a little bit, say, okay, so, not that that would make a clean city, but it might make a little bit more harsher observance of the laws.
Sure.
I, in terms of fees, I don't know when, like, we've changed some of the fees, I'd have to go back to maximum study and look at that. We don't really, probably need to study, we just probably would just say, let's shift some of them around. We probably want to look at which ones they are, how is it being handled? Let's see, in terms of single-stream recycle, that's in the strategic plan for our solid waste district, so that's in the off thing. Of course, the, you know, standardized cans has been discussed before. It would require an initial startup of cost, I mean, just to replace and get everybody with a can that works and a recycle bin that works. Yard waste is another matter, we could always talk about that, but I don't know how often, you know, we don't have that many palm trees, so I don't know. At the same time, there are things that can be done. I'll look at this and see what we can do. If you look at the general fund, I think our certified resource is about $70,000, $77,000. So we don't have a lot of room to play in our general fund. At the same time, increasing of fees would be, not for this year, but for next, if we, so everybody can plan ahead. I'm trying to think what other recommendations we have. We have some out there, though. We'll look at it and go from there.
We just asked you to be cognizant of, you know, labor issues to, we talked about.
We have, and I just want to add that we pounded out these issues quite a lot over the many months. We really hammered the issues out in terms of looking at all these issues. And, you know, there's always, for every idea that's thrown out there, many times there's somebody who comes back and says, well, we can't do it for this reason or that reason. I felt like we really, really pushed through a lot of those issues. And I really feel, Jeff and I feel like we really need to move forward with some of these recommendations. We all want a cleaner, more livable city. And I, of course, when it came to the West Side Beautification Group earlier, everyone on the committee knows what one of my larger issues were, which is unsightliness of trash. And that's trash storage. So that's some issue that in this recommendation, we, we asked that we have to even sit down and look at further because we're not doing it, in my opinion. We are not doing it. For whatever reason, we're not doing it. Week after week, I can give you hundreds of photos. I know that. So that's an issue that we couldn't totally resolve within our committee. And I was willing, I compromised and said, okay, we'll continue to look at that more focused and figure out how to solve that problem because that is an issue that concerns a lot of people, especially in the closed in neighborhoods. But also, I wanted to stress the issue of staffing. I think it's an important one at the office. When we really looked at the time it takes to do all the rental inspections through the numerous, I don't know that the general public, there was something recently in the Athens News Today about the, our rental market in our community. We have a very large rental market and this office has a lot to do. And we expect a lot out of them. We expect that properties will be kept up and managed and meet the code. So we do expect a lot as well. So, we did really talk about those issues extensively.
I think, I think the report's wonderful and I'm glad, again, my hat's off to those of you who've served on the committee. My hat's also off to John Pasky, because I've met with John on many occasions about a number of different code issues throughout the city, some of which you've addressed, some that I brought to John when I first took office. And I have to say, you know, knowing what you have to work with, it's, you know, it's a big job. There's a lot of moving parts. It is the entire city. So that said, you know, I'm...
I think that our, our aim has to be to prioritize because we can't institute 50 changes and expect the code enforcement to be able to do it and the public to be educated about it all at the same time. So I think that we need to think about what would personally give, you know, the biggest bang for the kind of buck sort of attitude. I think that some of these recommendations is administrative recommendations and they don't necessarily require, you know, it's not our place to do internal administration choices or, you know, there are recommendations that have been put forward, like open burning and social fires is like reporting. We don't need, as a council, to make an ordinance saying you have to report, do better reporting for, you know, social fires. I think that we, what I would, what I see is that on one hand, we have a responsibility to have a safe and clean city at this, and, but it makes me no end frustrated that we are like having to continually, you know, put the, you know, burn the fires under these land, some of these landlords. And it's not all just, all the landlords, there's home, homeowners that do it too. But it just seems, and that's, you know, we talked earlier about beautification with West Side, of identifying, you know, troubled landlords. Maybe they have to have some special educational experiences required of them in order to get their permit the next year or something. That's something that kind of more out of the box that we could possibly look at. And I think that from what I've heard from council, from people in the community, is that the garbage is a huge issue. And I think it also is one of those big, big bang for the buck sort of things because it's an attitude. Because if you are driving down the street and the street looks really nice and you, as the mayor has said repeatedly, you can't tell which house is a rental because everybody's garbage cans are away. That, that says to the renters also, they'll say, oh, it's garbage day and I need to take my cans in because everybody else has. And it's so easy to stand out that way and then everybody, like, you know, put your cans away. And so I'm inclined to look at some of those issues and they've been really thought out very well by the West Side and those sort of things. I think that that's probably, in my mind, a logical, you know, kind of first step for us and, you know, and I understand the, you know, difficulty with having more things for the code enforcement office to do. But that's almost like giving them a better tool if the language is that much more clear, you know, sort of thing. So, and we could do that before, if that doesn't work, maybe we have to institute, you know, uniform garbage can. And that could be a, you know, a stick and a carrot, you know, get it together or we're going to make you do something that's more expensive or something, so.
Thank you. Again, I want to echo sentiments about thanks towards members involved at the committee, whether you're employee of the city or whether you're a volunteer or citizen. Again, it's the, the challenge of determining what the needs of a community in the bigger city are at large here. On a nice note, interestingly enough, simultaneously, many of us have been having these similar conversations about things that need to be addressed within the city or ways to tackle some of the problems such as the snow removal or trash or litter. Member Pappy was involved with that prior to, years before becoming a, as a private citizen, way before becoming a member of council, she's been involved with a number of these issues. I think something that, that is challenging oftentimes for politicians to consider is this, the revenue stream and how to address it. It's not a popular topic to bring up on in the public forum, which is the potential need to raise taxes. We haven't had an income tax raised since the 80s. The cost of living has, has substantially gone up. Inflation has gone up at times. There's, there's needs to address within a community. And if that's the case, and we're seeing that codes or policies or subtle changes aren't going to do it, then we may need to throw more money at some of these needs. If we want more police officers on the street walking the beat, then we're going to have to raise revenue to pay for these officers. If we want more code officers to assist in the mayor and John Pasky's vision as well, then we have to have the money or revenue to support these positions. And that's something very challenging that we, I think, as, as, as a, as a group have to, to look at. We have to talk to our constituents, we have to talk to our people in the community that we represent and really look at this hard issue. Because there's a lot of things that keep coming at us that might need resolved through more income. And it's not a popular issue to bring up, but it might be the reality, the 1980s were a long time ago. A long time ago. Thank you.
Heather, John, would you like to say anything? Okay. You're just absorbing. Okay. Well, Ed, this is going to be an ongoing conversation, we can all tell, right? Okay. My next agenda item is kind of a discussion on our little trip to the Armory last week. And I just wanted to, to open it up for people to talk about it and what they see for council, what maybe next steps we need to take or whether it was just a nice time to go and see the Armory. So, is there, open it up to anybody? I mean, I know that it's been a long running issue for the city. We have had, you know, discussions about it previously, so I guess it's something we can put on our five-year agendas. Steve?
Or a two-year agenda. Anyway, I know that, remember, Follett, you've, you put a lot of work into this years ago and had an ad hoc committee that looked into this. I would like to suggest, as a conversation that you and I have had in the past, is to possibly resurrect an ad hoc committee to look at planning. I've had conversations with the mayor and one of the things that's very clear is what is the plan? And I think that that's what's needed, is to have an ad hoc committee put together comprised of, of interested citizens throughout the city. There's been a number of them have come forward who are interested in seeing the Armory become something. Anyone who might be interested. I think the timing is right, is now, again, I wanted to throw out there, as I did during the tour, that we now are a certified local government in terms of historic preservation. So therefore, I think the timing is right for that as well, to start exploring different revenue streams, that there might be grants out there to bring the Armory back to life. But like I said, I, I, I do know there's a large number of citizens out there that are concerned about the Armory remaining dormant and ultimately someday just becoming a large crater at the north end of Court Street, which would be a travesty.
My comment is that when we talk about, to me, this is a good follow-up with what we just discussed, when we're trying to improve the livability of our city, reduce the light, reduce those kinds of things, when you have a building that is sitting vacant, again, bringing, brainstorming, bringing the ideas together, looking at economic development, looking at all those kinds of things, it's, it's, it just ties all together into our vision for the city. It's not going to be an easy task, that's why it's sitting there empty. It's, it's not an easy task to figure out what to do with the Armory. And that's why it's been empty for so long. And there, there are issues with it. And, you know, many times people will say, you know, just tear it down and start over or make it a parking lot. Well, you know, I don't think anybody really wants to see that happen. So it, it, it does take some, some brainstorming and bringing the right parties together. And I know, Steve, that you've been involved with doing that as well. And we do, we finally, after 20 years, they've been up and running about a year now, the historical commission, and we were just certified as a historical city. You know, all those things.
Certified city.
Certified city. All those things, improve our livability, improve the economic development, all those kinds of things. And it is, it's, this is the only word I can think of, but it, you know, it's this, it's this glowing building at the end of the street. It was cool to see it all lit up this summer, or this, for Christmas, for the holidays. So I, I think we need to really sit down and if that's a committee that needs to be formed formally by council, maybe that needs to happen.
I feel compelled to also mention something that hasn't been mentioned, even when we had the tour, is the fact that in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan speaks to the Armory. It speaks to the Carpenter Street Arts Corridor. It's, it's part of the uptown corridor plan for Phase Two. And it lists the Armory in there as being the anchor of a, potentially an arts cultural district here in the city of Athens.
Mayor, what's your?
You want me to comment on the Armory or something else?
Positive.
No, I think, no, that's in positive terms, but, I mean, I...
It's still, okay, when, when you talk about performing arts, it still has to maintain itself somehow rather than be a drag on our con, our business or our budget. It's going to cost dollars, as you know, we've already discussed that at the public, at the walk-around. The indirect cost, of course, would be finding a place for our records, so we'd have to find a roof for those, either in the building or elsewhere. So we'd either segregate part of it or not at all, or move to some third, another location. I'm willing to listen. I'm not willing to spend money at it yet because I want to hear something different than just performing arts because performing arts, we have several, the ideas how to keep it occupied and running because any building that you do have does cost money to maintain with heat, with electricity, with plumbing. So I'm open to suggestions. If you're going to put a committee together, go for it.
Well, I think that that probably is, makes the most sense. My, my concern, whenever we start talking about, you know, city buildings or, or things is that, that it's a transparent process and, and it's an inclusive process, you know, and this is something that has done, been done before. And I think idea, you know, it could be that a few years ago, when the, the committee got together and it was, you know, hit a certain roadblock and maybe those things are now changed and there's other people who have other ideas and, and such. So I think that, yeah, I would be willing, under planning and development, to have, to address, you know, to put together an ad hoc committee. I would put it to Steve since he's really been spearheading some of this, this time to help with that and put together, put something together to look at it and have some people, you know, from council, other people from council.
Well, the historical, you've got a committee, the historical group already.
Historical commission. Whether we want to have, well, my concern is that, that Paul Logue is, you know, he's the liaison with that and I don't want to put more stuff on Paul's plate as, you know, trying to get meetings and stuff together. So we can talk to Paul and see what he, where he sees the historical commission playing into this. And so I'd be willing to, you know, think of some, I'll talk with Paul and see what he thinks and then I can report back, so.
Just, just a comment. What I, I've been thinking, what I'm hearing here is we've had specific proposals for what to do with the Armory in the past. And we've talked about performing arts and galleries and so on, and even someone had an idea for a hotel and so on. I, I think what we're looking more is, it has to be multipurpose. It almost has to be like the, the rec center is right now. We have rooms and people come in and one hour they're doing yoga, the next they're, they're doing karate for kids and all kinds of other activities that are going on there. And I think that we, we're going to have to really think out of the box here. I, I agree with the mayor. We have performing arts venues in this town already. They've been here for years and they do very well and because that's what they do. I don't know that we need another full-time dedicated 100% performing arts center. As much as I like the performing arts, you know, I like to see a, a, a full-time 100% gallery, you know, for the, for the visual arts. We have those too, you know? Do we need another full 100%? I don't think so. I, I think what we're going to have to look at is how can we multitask, multipurpose this space? It's a great space, it's got a lot of potential, we just have to tap it. So one week it's this, the next week it's that, and we just sort of adapt with it.
I, I can see that.
Oh, and the exploration of local government funds, if they're possible. Again, we talked about like that's some kind of panacea, but I don't know what the capabilities are, I don't know what the limitations are. I have attended some of the Ohio Preservation Meetings where they talk about the gathering funds, but you really have to do some homework. You have to make sure that whatever you're going to do with this building, and again, the conversation was the outside facade, but also elements of the inside facade of how to maintain the historical integrity, which is what many of these funds and grants go towards. So how do you make that mesh with what we want to do, which would be, you know, whether records, climate control for records, to, as you say, performing arts or offices or, you know, multi, you know, multi-unit stuff, multitask stuff. Because, you know, we all look at that giant drill room and say, that's a beautiful space. But, you know, you can only get one use at a time. So unlike community center where you can split it off, do you want to do that and how much would that cost as well? You know, again, it is too much of a centerpiece for our city to just say, tear it down and put a parking lot in or parking garage in. I, I would want to make sure whatever we do is measured and, and as I say, is be able to take care of the revenue of itself so we don't have to be going to the well each time and saying, you know, can you, can you fund some more? Can you fund some more? But again, I think we, you know, when things change, we should look at it again. Yes. I'll leave it to you guys to start it off, I guess. And again, we do have the historic preservations group that, they have things on their plates as well, but this would be one of them. And it's a, it's a good group. I know they were meeting earlier today, so.
Right. Well, I, I think that, I'll speak with Paul and, and see what he, his ideas are on this. And then whether it's a subcommittee of the historic commission or an ad hoc committee and then whether it's a subcommittee of the Historic Commission, or an ad hoc committee of, of the council, then I'll have a better idea of that after I speak with Paul and such. So, Steve?
I'd just like to add one more thing, and kind of to redress what Member Reisner was saying, is that I, I agree wholeheartedly that it should be a multifunctional space. I can say that tourism, Paige Alast has said, it would be interesting to have a flexible enough space to where it could be used for conferences that may hold 100, or 450 attendees. MOGA kind of spoke to that this year, which was a large geocaching event, that it would make, it would be nice if it were that flexible to use. I also kind of want to move away from the term that's been kicked around a lot, which is a center for performing arts. I kind of view this personally as a cultural center, as, at the hub of, of Court Street and Carpenter. And by having it being a cultural center, it, it leads, lends itself to being very flexible in its use. And I think there's a lot of entities across the city, a lot of constituents who would like to see this become just that, a, a very flexible, open space, almost white box that can be, there can be ballet one night, the next night we're holding again the geocaching conference, the night after that, how cool would it be to actually have a symphony playing inside that structure, if, if it could be done?
Or Rastakon.
Sure. Mayor, we could do anything.
Okay.
Okay, well, I will, I will work with Paul and, and get back to you, have a little report, next committee.
Just to bring up miscellaneous, of course, is April 24th. We're going to have the Arts Parks Recreation Master Plan Open House at the community center. I think it's on the city website at this point.
Right. Is the plan itself on the, on, okay?
Yes, it is.
Right. Also, we've mentioned several dates tonight, and I just want to reemphasize that if people didn't catch it tonight, that these will be on the website. I think that's, our calendar is very full.
April 24th, at what time? We're still deciding.
At the time.
Okay.
I believe six to 6:30 that I am seeking additional hours, because that's a big Thursday. I'm worried.
Yeah.
Well, also, you know, something that people said worked well was kind of the, when OU was doing certain things, and they had the plans out there, and they had pictures, and then people go by and look at them, maybe we can also ensure that if it's only a half an hour, and it's only one night, not everybody might be able to get there, and...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it would last a half hour.
Oh, okay.
I was determining what the good time is.
You said six to 6:30. Oh, okay. Great, okay. Well, and I still think, you know, it helps people who, who might not be able to come. And I know that certain things are on the website, but if there's certain visuals that they use, it always helps, you know, big, big plans, like what they did with Boogie on the Bricks, that was good, you know, so.
I, I believe there is a PDF or executive summary, as well as the report itself in place, so that's, that's ready to go.
Any, any other miscellaneous?
Just another announcement, of course, spring cleanup's coming. That's not your committee, but...
Right.
It's coming up 21st to 25th, so.
And when is the hazardous waste day? Did we decide on that?
May 31st.
May 31st.
I'm not able to align it with spring cleanup.
Wow.
Hang on to that, as you're cleaning and...
Save your batteries.
...in April. We've settled on a 9:00 AM deadline.
Okay.
And in terms of other announcements, I would re, remiss if they did not mention illegal voter is going to have their primary candidate forums going. Tuesdays, 22nd will be the judges of Common Plea, County Common Pleas Court, and the 29th will be Republican Party nomination for the 94th District. Both of these are in conjunction with our public library for information for everybody, and see what time it is, 6:30 to 8:30. So you can be there too, and learn about politics, if you didn't know of it.
Any other miscellaneous?
Member Patterson has a pass.
Just an announcement, not on your committee, but it's something I want to bring up, and that is that the Commission on Disabilities has moved their, their monthly meeting to tomorrow night. Normally it would be Wednesday evening, but it's tomorrow evening at the community center. It'll be the first meeting to where the, the OU's entity, PACTAP, the President's Advisory Council on Disabilities and Accessibility Programs, is meeting for the first time with the Athens City Commission on Disabilities to kind of brainstorm how we're going to go about tackling some of the issues and our charge that we're partnering up with, such as a disaster readiness, disaster preparedness plan for the city of Athens, and other items. So tomorrow evening, 6:30, community center. It'll be in Activity Room B, we need a larger room as well.
Any other miscellaneous announcements? One, I'm done with my agenda.
Okay, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be next Monday.
Thank you.